Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you into the Select Board. Would you please join me in your Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take this opportunity to thank everyone for coming. And just as a reminder that for the public comment, we would like for you to limit your comments to three minutes, please. And I ask you that if there is more than one comment on the same subject, that you be prepared to come back around and give everybody a chance before you do it. Thank you. The first item on the agenda for tonight is the public notice. The Barrington Board of Select will be holding a public hearing on Monday, July 23rd, 2018, at 6:30 PM at the Early Childhood Center where we're at right now. On the issuance of a building permit for 332 Longshore Drive, a private road, John and Mary Hool, lot number, map number 102, lot 0082. Participants available. You're going to speak to it, okay? Thank you.
So Mr. and Mrs. Hool have actually previously requested two other building permits on this lot. And they have twice signed the private road agreement, and it's been reported in the registry of deeds. Currently, this application is to add two bedrooms to their home. Peter Cook has viewed the road and feels that it needs grading, and there is also a problem at the driveway with a washout. He recommends that after construction, the road be graded from Second Crown Point Road to the Hool's residence, and this will also fix the washout. It's also recommended that the Hools join the road association. So I'm actually asking for a motion for issuance of the building permit and to include the recommendations of the road agent.
Any discussion from the board?
I just have a question. This is a year round home, not camp.
Is he around home?
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
What's the loading on these lots this lot?
Excuse me?
What's the loading going to be on this lot with two more bedrooms?
Um, do you know, John?
He's got a new set of designs for various to accommodate that with the accessory garage and the parking garage, that's wide system.
It's actually one of the largest lots.
I know, where it is. That's my neighbor.
All right. We're going to hear any further. Do we have a motion?
I'm awaiting the motion.
Have a motion?
A second.
We have a second. Vote, please. Aye or aye?
Protocol aye.
Aye or aye?
Aye or aye.
Aye or aye, motion carries five with O.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Suzanne. Now I will close the public hearing on the issuance of a building permit for 332 Longshore Drive. Appointments, we have Peter Cook for recycling, please. Peter?
And he is with him, Peter Lashapell from Waste Management, who is in charge of recycling.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah, I asked Pete to come, so if he had any questions. As you might be aware, or might not be aware, recycling is tanked in the market. It's not just a town issue globally. Everybody's scrambling, trying to figure out what to do, all costs. What I'm here for tonight is, we currently do combing. We pay $100 a ton to get rid of our combing. What I'm looking to do is get the board's approval to bring in a tub to get rid of what is considered the biggest contaminant of the combing, and that's the glass. So what I'm looking to do is take the glass and train the public into doing it the way we used to do it, and it's going to have its own bin, so it'll be nothing but glass. It'll take it out of the combing, and then lower, by doing that, we can lower the price of the combing to $72.15 a ton. But it does come with consequences, because obviously, if you take that glass out, it's got to go somewhere. That would be taking the Waste Management, at $35 a ton. I'm thinking that we could probably get two weeks out of a glass tub, I'm hoping. Once again, it's something that we're going to have to try in order to figure out if we can get two weeks. Probably, I would say, a tub of glass is going to run probably somewhere around eight, 10 ton every time it's dumped. So basically, what we're just looking to try and do is get ahead of the curve. I've talked to NARA. They also thought that this was a good idea. And it may be followed up down the road by one container just totally being cardboard and paper, and another container just being plastics. It used to take all plastics, now they only take ones, twos, and threes. So we're going to have to do some mitigation of that. It's going to take time. It's not something that's going to happen overnight. But the market is fluctuating daily. We've had five increases on combing since January, and it just keeps going up. I'm thinking that this is probably the best way for right now, to get us through the end of the year, and we'll probably have the lowest cost effect of the budget. If it keeps going the way it's going, I ain't going to lie, the budget's going to be over. Because this is something that nobody really foreseen back in, you know, October and November of last year. Everything was looking good. So I guess what I'm here tonight is to ask your permission to work with the public, get some flyers out, and go ahead and bring in a bid just for glass only, the way we used to do it, so we can lower the cost of the combing, get the biggest contaminant out of it, and it should work for us beneficially as far as when we ship our combing, it'll be a lot cleaner load. So if the market does come back, we'll already have that cleaner load, so we should, you know, have, you know, obviously, I wish I knew, you know, when that was going to happen. We don't see any, anything in the near future as far as that happening. And that's what I'm here to do, just trying to give you an update, ask your thoughts and opinions, and I asked Pete to come, if you had any questions for him, because he'd be able to answer those questions on his end better than mine.
How much difficulty you think it's going to be to educate everyone? Or how much time, also, how much time would it take you to get the word out?
It's going to be, it's not going to be simple. People don't like change.
No, they don't.
It's, you know, this is the way we were doing it 15 years ago, and we changed the combing, and now do it in the markets. It's not, it's not just something that the town's facing, it's something that the state's facing, it's something that the whole world is facing. It's a global issue, and the prices and stuff are like, I don't know how I want to word it, but China is the big draw in all of this, you know, so.
Any other questions? Tracy?
The contract that we signed with Waste Management had nothing to do with recyclables, correct?
Well, it does as far as, you know, the price, and then, you know, but it also states in there that if something happens, then you're not going to have to, you know, beat those costs.
Okay.
It's like I said, it's since, I mean, it's February to this point now, price has changed every single week.
Well, you need to go back, you had a series of volunteers that also helped years ago with the transfer station at the windows to separate things. Will you have to go back to that?
I don't see that happening right now. That could possibly happen down the road in the future. The problem is with volunteers now, is you can't just have, for example, you can't go work the transfer station and volunteer five hours a day, or five hours on a Tuesday, unless you get certified. And it's hard to find people who want to go up to get certified and re-certified every single year to volunteer their time. That's when the big issues come in. Back when this all started, it was all volunteer. There wasn't, there wasn't any of those issues.
On the, excuse me, just to piggyback on the certification, can we have that group come here to certify? Is that possible, is that something we should look into?
Usually what's done is they do it, Conket right there at DES.
Yeah.
We can look into it. I'm not going to say it's possible, and I'm not going to say it's not possible.
Okay, I just wanted to know.
We can certainly ask.
Dan, you had a question?
Can we spend some money on signage, banners, identify everything? Because people eat here, sort of fly up.
If, this is one of those things that if we start doing this through the NARA, we can actually get some signage and stuff through them, that's why to kind of join them.
That's how we got our facility signed, through NARA. They have a point system, and we got that facility signed in a free.
Even if we ever spend some money, it'd be worth it, just people.
Like I said, I'm just, all I'm trying to do is jump ahead of the curve, because it's just going to get, it's just going to get more pricey from here, you know what I mean? The market's just terrible, just terrible.
Just as a reminder so that people can go home, if you do have comments, please come up to the microphones, and we record it, and when this is shown on television, it can be that way. You have, go ahead, Andy?
I'm just curious to know, what's the segregation? Are we doing another dumpster?
Yeah.
Next to it? Is it going to go in the empty bay that's currently there?
It's going to go in, it's going to go here where McDonald's is.
Yeah.
Going to go right in that bunker, right there beside that, so the people just walk up. I'm going to try for the beginning, to initiate it, and try doing it without getting another container, and try using the container that's there, and then that'll just lower us down to three bulk containers. I'll try, get that a shot before I go and rent one and, you know, do all of that. But that's, you know, the hard time is going to be right now, because you're open three days, and we've got hard time. You know, when you go back to your winter hours, your holiday can get away with it.
Any other questions?
Anything you can add, or you want to add?
You did a very good job, didn't you?
Peter, do you need a motion?
I'm going to, I don't know how it works.
Hi, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Pete Lashapell, Waste Management. Peter Cook did an excellent job explaining what's going on. As he said, this is a global issue. Backing up a little year ago, China put a ban on 24 different commodities, including mixed paper and plastics. By doing that, it just put the whole market, basically, excuse the pun, in the toilet. And prices, not just here in Barrington, but across the state, across the country, across the world, prices for, recycle the material has skyrocketed, and the values of material have dropped. For instance, on mixed paper, a year ago, the value to recycle mixed paper was about $65, $70 a ton. Today, it's zero, or minus $5. So we're actually paying to recycle mixed paper. And I'm not here to say, don't recycle, please. I mean, I suppose against every fabric in my audience, preaching that for 16 years. It's the right thing to do, but it also now comes with a cost. Before, there was value of cardboard, like $300, $400 a ton. Today, it's $65 to $70 a ton. So even cardboard has tanked. It's, like Peter said, it's, I don't see this recovering anytime soon. And I tell every municipality that I deal with, this is kind of the new norm. And it's unfortunate, and again, I don't want it in a landfill or incinerated somewhere. It should be recycled. But again, I know I sit in your shoes, I'm a city council in Rochester, New Hampshire, so I know, you know, you have to weigh, there's, you know, the good, right thing to do, but then there's cost. Then you have constituents you need to answer to, so I get it. To lower your cost, glass has no market right now. It's heavy, very expensive to transport. If we take it, I'm going to use it for, I'll put it in a pile, we crush it, we mix it with soil, we use it for a top cover. When we do some expansions, we lay pipe to capture the methane, and leachate, we use it for pipe drainage. But right now, there's just no market for glass. You do have an option, but it's even more expensive than bringing it to Waste Management. So I told Peter, is to bring it to Wakefield, and they'll use it for aggregate as a base coat. But your haul from here to there would pretty much double, like you're paying now, you might say $5 a ton, but the haul would be much more. I mean, that's all I have, anyone else has questions for?
Any questions of Pete? Tracy, please.
It sounds to me like what we're talking about is that, Peter, you need us to say to you that it's okay to have up to a 10% variance in what was expected in the recycling budget.
I'm asking for permission to go ahead and start the process. It's going to, it's going to take time. I mean, we're going to have to get flyers out there. You know, we're going to have to start, you know, starting tomorrow if it's approved. And, you know, hey, okay, this is where we're headed, this is what we got to do. And we got to be there, you know, I mean, honestly, my goal is to hopefully make it within a couple of months and be there, because it's going to take that long to get in there.
So you need a motion from the board to allow the separation of the recyclables and to spend up to a variance of 10% in the recycling budget?
Pretty much, the 10% goes, which right now, the recycling part of the budget, gone. That's why I'm here. It's just.
So should we be proposing to expect a 20% variance in the recycling budget? What's realistic, Peter?
Yeah, I think.
John, go ahead.
I would suggest you not put a percent in for variance, but just recognize that there will be a cost overrun, and realize we need to make those savings up elsewhere in the budget.
This is something that I've been looking at for the last three or four months. Trying to think I can give the board whatever in the budget, even though we haven't, all of this happened. I don't want to come in here in September or October during the budget process, and then you all look at me and say, well, the total budget's over by 20 grand. What's the story? Right now, I'm just trying to give you a heads up, that that is a possibility.
Appreciate that, Peter.
Very good.
Is there any other further comments? Andy?
Are there other things that we should be looking at or doing? Should we be looking at making a bigger change from recycling into an all-in-one shop, or parsing it out?
I think if we try to do it all in one change, it's going to be more confusing for everybody than, than, than this way. It's like I said, let's, I want to see how this is going to work, because glass is the biggest contaminant. Without the, if you don't have to deal with the glass, your contamination wouldn't be good. So I'm thinking we can do that, and then I want to keep the other option up and available. So if, let's just say, you know, God willing, and everything works out good, three months from now, cardboard's back up to $200 a ton, or $300 a ton, maybe that's the time to say, okay, now let's put, let's put cardboard and paper in this one, and let's put plastic in the other one.
Well, I guess that's what I'm wondering, does it make sense to wait? If it means they're going to price it out differently per ton, this is a chance to recoup some of that lost revenue that's already been hurt up in our current system. And if it's going to take two more months to do it, it means we're not going to see, we're not even going to see a level load on this for two to three months.
So what are you proposing, Andy? I'm trying to just.
I'm wondering if we should look at separating cardboard and paper, plastic and glass, and just going back to the standard, every tier.
Wouldn't that cost us more money, though, in the long run? Because there's no value on any of it right now.
But ultimately, it would save your outage cost.
Pete?
Yes and no. There's still a cost to recycle, right? Single-stream recycling was introduced years ago for the ease of use. And I love it, you know, I have one bucket for trash, and another one for recycling. I used to tell municipalities, and I still do, I go, let the Waste Managers of the world separate for you. But the problem with that is, everyone started thinking, you know what? Everyone was gung ho, we need to recycle more, get our recycling rate up. And I tell municipalities, it's not quantity, it's quality. You want good, quality stuff. I visited hundreds of transfer stations, curbside programs, I've looked in compacters like you have here for recycling. I look in, and I see a plunger. I see used diapers. I'm like, why would someone think that people do? And I have a couple sheets, if you don't mind me hinting out, this is the most common contaminants that we see in the single-stream recycling process that we do here in Barrington. And if I may. Oh, thank you. Believe it or not, this is some of the stuff that, I think I had just enough. Believe it or not, that's some of the stuff that we see, and we see a lot more. I could actually make 32 pages and still not capture everything that we find in there. I found bowling balls, engine blocks. I mean, engine block is steel, but not, it's not handled in your single-stream recycling that you do here. But this is a bit, and I was, Aaron, I don't remember, it was a couple of years ago, I spent the Saturday morning, and I had a, I had a display set up, and just to educate residents as they were coming in, had a bunch of material in front of me, and I just kind of quiz, say, you know, what do you think is recyclable and what's not? And they would pick it, and I plan on doing that again, probably in the next couple of weekends, I'm kind of busy, but probably sometime in August, I'll go back up there on a Saturday, just to help educate.
Yeah, I think it would help if you had somebody, as they left, they got to hand out similar to this, or whatever you consider to be information you want to go, that would take it with them.
Education is key. It's, I mean, it has to be in front of them 24/7, every time they come into that facility. And it's tough, because you have to hire 15 people to man everything, and obviously, that's not budget feasible. But the education piece, I can work with Mr. Scruton in the town, and Peter, we have a link to go right to our website, recycleoft and recyclewhite, that gives a wealth of information on what's recyclable and what's not. And I have another flyer. These are, this flyer here is what we want to see in a clean, single-stream recycling container. No plastic bags, no food waste, bottles of water, empty bottles of soda, because that's what contaminates all the good paper and the cardboard that someone throws, the Coke or a beer, or something in their household. But this is a good piece. You'll notice the top middle is a plastic, and you'll notice that the plastics that have a market, and that are recyclable at this point, are ones, twos, and fives. And people are like, oh, gosh, how do I tell the difference? And just for a quick reference, an easy, yeah, an easy reference to look at, anything with a neck, like that soda bottle, or, excuse me, a water bottle, a soda bottle, a detergent, laundry detergent, anything with a neck is a one, two, or a five. The plastic clam shells that a sandwich or fruit comes in, that's probably a six. Yeah, I probably could recycle it, but there's really no market for it right now. It's being thrown away or incinerated.
So I think that's probably the challenge, is if you look, like even the aroma Joe's cup will have the recycling emblem on it. So you'll see a lot of, and myself included, I know I pick it up and I look, and I'm like, yep, I clean it, and then I put it on the recycling bucket.
It's our own fault, and that's why China said, timeout, we don't want your stuff anymore, because they're cleaning up their environment, because they were receiving all our trash. We were gung ho to recycle more, we'd bail everything, send everything there, and a bale of cardboard would have 40% of garbage. So when I went overseas, China was picking that stuff out, and they were disposing it. And they said, no, no more, and they tightened up their regulations now. We cannot send anything, any bale cannot be more than 0.5% contaminated, less than 1%, half a percent. The technology doesn't exist to get it that clean, other than separating everything. But still, to your point, you'd have more containers, kind of a challenge to make sure you guys used to separate a bale there, but to sort it and keep it clean, it's still going to be a cost, you know, to process that and ship it overseas. So it's just a down market, and it's unfortunate. It's not just here, I have communities in Maine, they have to ship a lot further than I'm charging close to $200 a ton, just to recycle.
We have any further questions from the board? I want to thank you both very much, I appreciate it.
Is there a motion, Doc?
I need a motion to, for Peter to allow him to proceed.
Yep, I need, I need a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, please. We have a second, Dan. We have a vote, please. Further discussion? Same, same?
From the discussion standpoint, we would like to figure out a better long-term solution to this, because this is just a short-term break fix on the road. It's not going to get us where we, all the way to where we need to be.
It's something we can work on, but right now, if there isn't a, I don't know, I, okay.
Not today, I'm just saying.
I'm just trying to get through this budget process, so we can, you wait during the next budget process.
Totally get it.
Because it's going to change.
We have a vote, please? Aye or aye?
Protocol aye.
Aye or aye?
Aye or aye, five with O. Thank you. Peter, good luck.
Don't go too fast, Peter.
I'll go, you're next.
Thank you, Peter, for mentioning that.
The next item on the agenda for tonight is the open payment, marking bits, and possible award. Peter?
I haven't seen that one. I don't even know them.
First one I have is from, oh, here we go.
Oh, I got it for your fingers.
Thank you, Andy. It's from Industrial Traffic Lines Incorporated from London, New York. The estimated for items one through four is $26,966 even.
One more time, Chairperson.
$26,966 even.
And they are a current vendor, correct?
Okay, so it's there. As stated earlier, this is from Highway Safety Systems of Rockland, Massachusetts. And their overall bid for items one through four is $30,078. Again, I'll repeat that, it's $30,078.
Do you want to look at these and then come back with the recommendation later on the meeting? Or is?
We've been going a little bit, I guess, you know, industrial's done us a roast for the last two years, they're a little bit, I guess, I forgot.
Any objections, any comments on the bids?
I'll make a motion.
My comment would be, I would still just like to look and make sure that they're apples to apples, like we do every house.
Check the math. All right, so if we turn around and have to check in the math, the math checks out, it is acceptable to go with the lowest bid?
Yeah, the math, the quality of the product.
That's correct.
You want to do it tonight?
We're going to do it, I'm doing it right now, so if any of them. Yeah, we can do that.
One thing, they all use the same net.
So could I have a motion to accept the bid from?
Industrial.
Industrial.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Industrial.
We have a motion?
Providing the math checks out.
Providing, actor provided the math checks out.
I'd second that.
Have a second, any further discussion? Very good point, Andy, thank you. Let's see, a vote, aye or aye?
Protocol aye.
Aye or aye?
Five with O, motion carries, thank you. Peter, thank you very much for your time.
Chairperson Bailey, can I ask John Scruton a question, please?
Sure, go ahead.
Is this meeting supposed to be televised right now?
Yes.
I received word from someone very close to me. It's not showing up on the television.
Okay. We're recording right now, but we cannot broadcast. So that it will only go out tomorrow at 8:00, it'll probably won't make the 8 o'clock. Tomorrow afternoon will be the first showing, and then it'll be 8:00, 8:00 from there on. And YouTube, it should be on sometime by noon time tomorrow.
Very good, thank you.
First showing. But no, we don't broadcast live. We've talked about it, it's on the tech committee's list of things to get to, and we've got to get back to it.
We can probably sell that almost, the whole Facebook Live piece, and get it up that way as well.
Gotcha, it's a matter of getting the internet connection in here, we're.
Very good.
Hope so. Moving on, the next one is public comment. As I stated earlier, public comment is for three minutes. We have anybody, public comment, please. Seeing none, we'll move on. Staff reports, John?
Minutes.
Oh, the minutes, yes. We need to review the minutes until I, 9:00, 2018. Is there any comments?
Did you make the change tonight?
Is there any other comments? We have a motion for acceptance?
Seconded.
Further comment? Seeing none, we'll vote. Dan?
Aye or aye?
Protocol aye.
Aye or aye, motion carries, thank you very much, Suzanne, very good.
Do you have the bid for the police station? We have one bid in for the police station renovation bid. That's under my report. This, this company came and looked at the building, spent some time there with Bob last week, and I think Wednesday, went through the facility.
This is from Dan Rose, Salem, New Hampshire, which is Avatar Construction. Their estimate is here. Total estimate for the job is $82,060.25. Again, that's from Avatar Construction in Cambridge, Massachusetts, and Salem, New Hampshire.
Shall we review those and come back with the recommendations to the board?
Does that appeal to the board?
Yep, I have one very specific question. Are they bringing in the fire system engineer?
My understanding is they were aware of that, right?
So they are.
Well, we will.
They were made aware. I'd like to look at that.
So before we approve that, we'll turn around and make sure that those items are in there. Very good, I appreciate it.
I'll read that, I see.
It's sent there?
I'll read that.
Well, yes, yeah, we have to do is make sure we have it correct. John, you want to continue?
The next item is the sand RFP to go out. I put the proposed wording for the advertisement at the end of my report. It's not very long. 4,000 yards of winter sand, no larger than 3/8 inch diameter stone. The road agent must approve of the sand for the bid to be accepted. This is because sand, there's a variety of different sands out there. Some sand has better grip for grabbing the roads in the winter, whereas other sands have more clay in them and they're nowhere near as good. So while that means that we may not go with the little bid if it determined the sand is not the grip kind that we need, you know, beach sand would do no good spreading it on a road for winter, for example. So these bids would be due in, this date would change to probably August 20th for the due date. August 20th is the due date. Is that acceptable to the board?
Comments from the board on that? Can we make some vongols? John, can you make some vongols to the vendors?
I believe that Peter will make. Yeah, Aaron, you have a list of vendors to call on the sand?
Yes.
Yes, the answer was yes to that question.
Any other ones?
If we move it out to that date, will Peter be all set to be able to make decisions in the timeframe that he needs to?
August 20th, Peter, they're going to move it out to that bid date?
Actually, if I may, are we going to have a meeting on the 13th? I'm proposing we have a meeting on the 13th because the 20th is so full already. And if we did that, then we could open them on the 13th and award it on the 20th.
That would be better.
That would be better for Peter. Is there any, is the board willing to meet on the 13th?
Anybody that's not going to be willing to meet on the 13th? Okay, 13th would be all right.
So the due date will be August 13th, and the award will be planned for the 20th. That gives you a week to review on Peter after they're open. So that consensus is the perceived of the RFP?
Anybody objecting to moving forward? Go ahead, John.
There is an empty slot at the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. John Hawkins has volunteered to serve for one year. Will the board appoint him to the Stratford Regional Planning Commission?
Is there any reason why that we should go into a non-public session to discuss John's appointment to this position?
Nothing's going to change.
Nothing's going to change, we have to do it this way. Since there's no objections, we have a motion to approve, please.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second. Bailey aye?
Aye aye.
Aye aye. Protocol aye.
Air aye.
Carries 5-0, congratulations. John?
The governing body is supposed to vote for the acceptance of funds for the Conservation Commission, so they have requested that the board agree to accept $50 from the Azlake Association for a talk that was given there, and $5,000 from the Lamprey Rivers Advisory Committee, Stratford Regional Planning, for a natural resource update. Will the board authorize the commission to accept the funds?
Anybody object?
No, but I'll make a motion to accept all the funds.
Motion accepted, I'll second it. Bailey aye?
Aye aye.
Protocol aye.
Air aye.
Motion carries 5-0, thank you.
Fred Nichols has agreed to rejoin the planning board. He was the chairman up until he left the board. We're desperate for members, we're trying to get members from the public, but he's agreed that he would get on, rejoin the board to help until they find more members.
Does anybody have need to go into non-public to discuss this appointment?
No, I'll make a motion, no.
We have a motion, it's all on there, so nobody has any need to go into non-public, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. Bailey aye?
Aye aye.
Protocol aye.
Air aye.
Thank you, we have 5-0, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Old Settlers Road Bridge Engineering, the state will pay 80% funding. They have to approve of the contract, they have approved of the HDA contract for preliminary engineering. The Bridge Capital Reserve Fund has $250,000 in it. The town has to expend the funds and then they will be reimbursed. So will the board authorize entering an agreement for $120,476 in request? The trustees or the trust fund provide payment of up to $124.76 for this engineering from Fund Number 63 Bridge and Colmit Capital Reserve Fund.
I'll make a motion to authorize the expenditure of up to $120,476 for the engineering of 63 Bridge and Colmit Capital Reserve.
$64.76.
$4.76.
I would second that.
I have a second. Bailey aye?
Aye aye.
Protocol aye.
Air aye.
5-0, thank you very much.
Our next one is authorization to advertise for sealed bid, tax-dated property, map 104, lot 89 on Berry River Road. It's .16 acres, it's a steep topo with boulders on it. The Abutters Realtor is the one who asked if it could be sold. My belief is, the intent is that it would be used to enlarge the area of a lot. It is large enough to develop now, but it would protect and it would make more sense to be a part of that lot. Will the board authorize to advertise the lot?
Discussion? Dan?
Can the Land Committee take a look at some other lots? Is there a thing for advertising? No, other lots on the list that we own.
Are you asking about this .16 acres?
No, adding all the lots.
Well, why don't we put that down one other time and work on this one here, please?
Sorry, can I just, are we advertising here, or is the?
We would advertise it for sealed bid, we're not selling it through the Realtor.
There's other lots down there, though.
Yeah, there are other lots down there, but all I'm asking for tonight is this one because it came up. The Land Committee can look up everything that's on there if they would like and deal with that, but right now, it's just this one which somebody is interested in. We kind of put them up as they're interested, these small lots that are unbuiltable.
I think what select person here might be saying is, we're going to spend the money to advertise, why not put the other available lots on there?
This advertising is to go on our website and to send to the Abutters. We're not going to spend for newspaper ads, we probably won't get it. I mean, the newspaper ad will cost $200.
So I'd make a motion to list it first.
I have a motion, we have a second, please.
I'll second.
I have a second from Mr. Dan, any further discussion? Still a vote, Mr. Aaron?
Aye.
Protocol aye. Aye aye.
Bailey aye, vote, show us 4 to 1.
On the date of the next meeting, the board has, I believe, agreed by consensus to add August 13th to our meeting schedule, is that correct?
As far as I'm concerned, yes, it is.
Is that in addition to the 20th?
Yes, yes, it is.
And that conflicts with the rent department again, so we're back on that schedule. Okay, thank you.
I understand, but the meeting on the 20th is with our attorney.
Yes, I understand.
And that will take much of that meeting.
Okay.
There was a request for a wedding that would have a band that goes past 9:00 PM. I have not received any objection. They had until the public comment earlier in this meeting to object, so unless any of the selectmen have received an objection to it, this waiver of the noise ordinance will become official now.
Any objections?
No, it was not made by the bride and groom, but by the landowner, the request.
Correct, Gary, you're the, Gary is here if he wants to speak to it.
Chairman Lloyd, you have to explain. Yeah, but in both our names. Yes, 702 Scrum, it'll be on the 28th, and it's not a live band, it's actually a PK. Just to begin the question. We pick between the three. It's a family wedding.
Okay, so that's all, so Gary. Thank you very much. I'll keep in touch.
That's John, moving on?
That's mine, congratulations.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Scruton?
I do need a non-public.
I have that written down to go in a non-public later on. Suzanne, please.
I have two intent excavates to be signed, six large change tax forms totaling $46,600. Abatement number 21, payroll manifest dated July 15th, and vendor manifest dated July
Anything else, Suzanne?
That's it.
We'll catch those afterwards.
And the signatures that John had mentioned about SRPC.
We still have, we have the two appointments out there to be signed also. Got those on the top, so they can be signed first, please.
They can be.
Sign first, though. Thank you. We can move on to old business. First item on old business is Swain Road, requested by select person Eric. Dan, you have a call?
Yes, there's, taxpayers has gained approval for a request, issue on our end, and I would ask the taxpayer to fund it through a warrant article, let the people speak.
And who would do the warrant article, Dan?
We can.
We voted not to do anything on that property for our last meeting, that's why we're here at this meeting. So, is there someone else that you could, maybe?
If you want to get 25 signatures, you can present it to the people.
What we're saying is that if you got 25 signatures and you wrote up what you wanted, and then Mr. Scruton would present that to the DRA, which is up and conquered, they would finalize the verbiage to make it legal, and then we would put it on the ballot for March, if that's what you had there ready to go.
John? Let me clarify now. If you wanted to have the town meeting vote on funding the improvements to the road, you could make a warrant article, I could help you with the wording. You would need to get the signatures of 25 registered voters, not just people. And then it would go on the warrant, and it would be out of a public hearing in January on the budget, out of the deliberative session the first Saturday in February, and then it would be voted on the second Tuesday of March. So would that, so can you?
And give me a name. Sorry, down Carlownee 264, Swain Road. So just to clarify, what would be the end goal in that? Are you saying that if it was approved by the town, then the $400,000, or whatever the estimate was, would be, that money would be used to bring the road up to a class V standard?
It would be up to you how you wanted to write the warrant article. I could help you with the construction, but you would have to decide, what are you asking for? Are you asking for the higher number to pave it? Are you asking for a number to bring it to grab the standard? Are you asking the town will accept it as it is? What are you going to the town meeting to ask is something you would have to decide. But you can get it, Dan's point is to get it in front of the voters, and a petition warrant article is one way to do that, but then you have to decide what you're putting in front of the voters.
So the whole, so for instance, at the last meeting, you guys were talking about an emergency lane, and so if we were to request something like that, would that go through the same process?
No, an emergency lane comes to the governing body, to the selectmen, and they're the ones who make that decision.
So just to back up a little, when I listened to it during that last meeting, I wasn't able to attend, but what I heard was that there was some talk of an emergency lane, and John, I believe you were going to go back and have a meeting with Peter, and then you guys are going to discuss that here.
We are still working on some of the issues that surround it, and we're not ready to make a presentation yet on that.
I think that for us, that would be what we'd like to hear first, and then we'd go from there.
Okay. Yeah, if you have until this January, it must be around, somewhere around the 10th, 9, 10, or 11, that you'll have to get that warrant article in.
So just for some clarification on our end, you guys are talking about the emergency lane, it would be good if we could get some clarification on that in the near future so that we could look at the next steps.
Right, right. Like, but what I'm saying is, you actually have until January, early January, to get the warrant article. But we will try to have the emergency lane information in the next month.
I think that what you should do, while you think of the emergency lane, is to sit down with Mr. Scruton and figure out what everybody wants. Do you want, what type of roads you want, how do you want it, how do you want it maintained? And you can sit down, and then from there, you can move forward with your warrant article, so you can have all your different options. And I know John would take the time, so you understand each one.
That makes sense. If you guys had the time tonight, it would be good to get some clarification on what the emergency lane, if we went down that road, what that would entail for us. Does that mean that, does that mean that the town would maintain that so that emergency vehicles could get through, but you wouldn't be held liable for the road? Is that what I understand?
That's why I said you need to, because it's so entailed and there's so many options, I think it would be best if you could set up the time to sit down with John, and then you could come back to us, oh, you can sit down, and John would help you write up the warrant article that would best suit everybody in the area. Because right now, it's just so time-consuming right now on asking to consider that.
Well, I can understand that, but.
And in general terms, what you stated is correct, but there are details, we're still working on those, so we're not ready to go any further than that general statement you just made.
Okay. I feel like we brought this up, I guess, in April, and we've been to four meetings now, and it seems like that you guys keep kicking the can down the road, to use that term, and it would be good to get some clarification on the emergency lane at some point in the near future.
I think John has given us some options, and the board has agreed to it, so it would be, it would help you for the length of time you'd spend, and you'd have all the options covered. Josh? Is there any more comments in the board on the Swain's Road? Seeing none, moving on, now we have the award of the RFP for Technology Services. I think everybody knows you have a handout that to review, and turn it over to you, Andy.
All right, so the Technology Committee, over the course of three or four different meetings, reviewed the different technology bids that were proposed for the town. We had originally whittled it down to four, we interviewed all four candidates, and then from there, made a selection, our selection was Rockport Technology Group. If anybody would like to have any discussion around any of the candidates, then I recommend we take that into non-public, but, and I can share with everyone what we covered, but the suggestion by the Technology Committee was to move forward with Rockport Technology Center.
And that was unanimous?
Yes.
Do we have any questions?
Chair, thank you, Chair Bailey. My only question was in reference to providing emergency service, and as I'm reading, non-business hours, we would be billed at, it looks like 325, two-hour minimum and a $65 travel fee.
And when you look at it, so if you compare them across the board, there wasn't a very significant difference with those. I mean, there are pros and cons to each of the different people, as I said, if we wanted to talk about non-publicity could, but when you looked at the total service provided or package provided, the more unanimous we felt, Rockport Technology was the most comprehensive.
So I would make the motion to accept the Technology Committee's recommendation.
John, do you have something? I was just going to say, the. I was just going to say, the times in which we need the emergency response is relatively small.
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as how there's none, Bailey, aye?
Aye.
Protocol, aye.
Air, aye.
Motion carriage five oh. Thank you very much. And I also want to take time for Andy and the Technology Group. I really thank you for the job well done on this. They see a lot of hours and a lot of effort put into this, and I want to thank you personally for that. I appreciate it.
And I want to make sure that the Technology Committee is recognized because between Dave and the chief and even his staff coming in to review certain aspects of it, and then Will reviewing what he could out of certain things, not not in this piece of it, but in other aspects of all the different technology we're doing, we're making a lot of really great progress to the town. I appreciate everything they're doing because they know far more about a lot of this than I do.
And thank you for your comments. Thank you. Dan?
Guys, John, can you clarify on this? Bids will be opened on July 23rd. Change that date?
Right, correct. We agreed that it was going to be August 13th and that the award was planned for August 20th. So that, I think, Aaron, you're aware that we've got to change that date, yes.
That's why I checked.
We knew, we knew the date had to be changed, but that's the, that was the draft done, hoping to get it in for the August 9th meeting, but we missed it.
Moving forward, new business. Any new business? Any board member have any new business, please? I'm not going to stay here long. Seeing as now, I'm going to move on to select persons' reports and concerns. Select person, Air, you're first tonight.
Conservation met with the Lakes Committees and stuff. It was really good. A lot of information was shared, a lot of who introduced each other, and then they cut the trees at Town Farm Road today, they'll finish up tomorrow morning.
I meant that one?
No, they, they're down two today. They want more to do, and I'll be done.
Select person, Howard, forgive me.
Thank you. Tonight, there was a ribbon cutting and a community event at the new playground. At the last rec commission meeting, the budget process had begun. They were waiting on final numbers on salaries, some digesting of information that took place at the last select board meeting, and information that will come from Lynn in order to finalize the presentation of their budget. We reviewed the renewed financial reports that the rec department has put out, where they illustrate anything in the revolving fund and then any expected expenditures, so there's complete transparency in both the meeting minutes and the reports, and plenty of information on planned future projects are available there as well. They went over framing the proclamation that Chairperson Bailey had read. That runs from year to year now, so we'll be celebrating our rec department each July.
I must tell you, I went by for a CBA meeting, and that was around 6:30, and I'll tell you, the amount of participation with people there was unbelievable. The place was just outstanding, and the equipment they've put in there, they have really put a good range, a large spectrum of different needs for different individuals. If anybody has it and knows that it holds a review of this, I would suggest you take your children, grandchildren out for a wonderful afternoon. Select person Hatch, you're next, please.
We had a meeting, the zoning board had a meeting, with two continuances to the August meeting. Simple things, small, lot line renovations, and as I said, that was the strength of the form of board meeting.
Thank you very much. Select person?
Okay. So Planning Board met on the 10th. There were, there was a continuance requested for the town and Liberty Truck property piece, whatever we're calling it these days. I don't know. There's still a few items. There was also a request for subdivision of land that was granted, and there was a request for an applicant to, from the utilities waiver, because they ran into a whole load of ledge and needed to take a piece of it off-ground and then go underground after that. This is about the Planning Board, the Technology Committee met, which we all voted on tonight. There will be a little bit of a break for Technology Committee meetings while we wait for the now selected contract company to come in and they will do a full assessment of all of the technology in the town and then come back with their recommendations. Then we will do a build-out plan based on that. And I think that was about everything that was there. Again, I just wanted to comment on the rec department's playground and their event tonight. It was very nice. I know my son really loves that playground and is having a great time on it.
Thank you very much. I want to make sure that everybody realizes that along with the rec commission, the rec director, we also had Peter and his crew that assisted, and they also are going to have a little bit more work after the camp is all over, they're going to go there, finish it. Just, I can't tell you how fabulous the product is and the safety standard. I don't have anything else to report. That's all I have. Next on the list is public comment. Do we have any more public comment, please? Thank you.
I went through all the numbers, but they're all right. On industrial, there's a little bit. They were basically the same places they were last year. Highway was about 1,000 miles more than they were last year, so I recommend industrial.
Have a motion for that, please? I believe it was motion, so we'll, some of them we just go with the euro. So we just follow up with it. Anybody have any questions on the numbers?
But, scan it and send it to us.
Will we scan it then?
We can scan it.
Okay.
We'll take care of it.
All right. Before we go on, if there's no public comment, we have selectman Nat will have his, please.
Select person? I just wanted to circle back around. Dan had raised the idea about putting some of the other lots that were down on, down through Berry River and Long Shore out to base, so can we build this together on that so we can review it and make a decision?
I think actually the lands committee has the list.
Right. They give it, I advise you, I think they advise you, goes that conservation, they're input on it.
But I believe they have the list, so I would defer, I can do it, but I would, the land committee, I believe that would be the best way to come.
Yeah, because I think you're looking at taxation of that piece of property.
Right.
Yeah.
So you're going to get, look at, the lands committee is going to look at them, and then you're going to come back with, give a list of which lots?
Right. Suzanne, you can put it, what you coordinate with Brian, the chairman. Put it on.
Instead of doing that, why don't we just have Suzanne put up a list of all the pieces of property that are available out there, and then the board will have a copy if we go from there, please?
Well, we have the list, I can tell Brian, or we'll go to the proper steps. Or I can do the proper steps and go to the clerk.
We'll get the list, one way or the other.
And if Brian Lindsay could talk to me, that would be good. So who's on first? Because what are we doing here? Now I'm all confused.
Brian will contact Suzanne.
So Brian's going to get in touch with Suzanne. Suzanne, review the list, and then from there, we're going to.
We have the list. We'll put it on the agenda.
Suzanne doesn't.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Moving on, please. We're going to go to unlock an issue. Do we have anybody that want to speak for the Tricentennial Stairway Committee? Any report they want to say to us tonight? Seeing that, we'll move on. All right, our next issue is, we're looking at.
Dan, can you turn that down just a little on the machine, on the box?
Moving on, we'd like to go into non-public session. Requested for legal, reputation, hiring, and personnel A, B, C, plus F.
I would second that motion.
And L.
May I have a vote, please? And, oh, and L. Sorry. John, you didn't give me that earlier.
It was L, not L.
Oh, so all right. Anyway, take off F, go to L. We have a motion. It's been seconded. Bailey, aye?
Aye.
Protocol, aye.
Air, aye.
So we're there, we'll take a five-minute recess, and we'll go into non-public. Thank you, everyone, for attending our meeting tonight. We appreciate your attendance. Suzanne?